So do you just announce that?
That she's on the phone.
That she's on the phone, she's participating, okay.
Yeah. We're going to open the meeting at February 18th, the Selectments Meeting. Lisa Wysocki is here via cellphone remotely. Let's see, we don't have any open session meeting minutes.
You got some serious echo because of the mic, I bet.
Oh, maybe drag it back a little. Okay.
Okay. So we have correspondence, Margaret?
The only correspondence tonight is the FY20 Highland Commons mitigation invoice. And actually Dennis is here if you'd like to recognize him to speak to the invoice.
We're all set.
Yep, this year the amount that we billed last year went up 2.2%. And it's ready to go out today.
Can you hear Lisa?
I can, it's a little muddled, but I can hear it well.
Because that's where people go.
Okay. So, yep.
Yep, last year's amount went up by 2.2% and we're quickly approaching the 600,000 range.
Good. So was it 591, 865, and 75 cents?
Yes.
All right. And we'll be signing that shortly, correct?
That's correct. Mary's doing an original for you.
General public comment. We do have a few audience members, the regulars.
Oh, you're general public.
When you're sitting out there, you're the general public. And it's almost 7:05. Should we go ahead and have Dennis come up?
Sure.
Dennis is here to be designated as a special municipal employee.
This year is going to be a killer year for the elections. At least two of them were predicting 1,800 to 2,000 people will be coming up to vote. And Eloise has asked me to run it again, as I have for the last 16 or 18 years. The problem being is now I'm a paid employee and you can't hold two positions that are paid. Fortunately, we're a town that's under 3,500. And because of that, you can still appoint a special employee who can be paid. So we're requesting that that happen. There's a lot to do either from 6:00 in the morning until probably 1:00 or 2:00 at night on the two big ones, the presidential and the primary, which is the one coming up March 3rd. It's a temporary position. It starts at 6:00 in the morning and runs until we declare the polls closed and the count is over. And it goes back to the possession of the town clerk. So it's only temporary for that particular day each time there's an election, so.
Okay, is there anything you want to add, Margaret?
Yes, so Dennis is referring to Chapter 268A, the Conflict of Interest Law, which does prohibit municipal employees from holding two paid offices. But there is a provision, because we are a small municipality, there is a provision that would allow the employee to be designated a special municipal employee, which exempts him from the prohibition on holding municipal positions, even though he has a financial interest in both. But Dennis has specified on the form, he's taking a vacation day from his regular position to do the warden's duties. So I absolutely recommend that the board approve this disclosure.
Okay.
Okay, motion to approve.
There she goes, look at that.
She's listening.
I know she is. I second.
Okay, is there any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Dennis.
See you on voting day.
All right.
Okay, so you'll have a form to sign on that.
Okay. We could probably do the town administrator report.
Okay. I'll start with something, a couple of things that aren't even on my written report. First of all, I had the pleasure of attending an emergency dispensing site drill today at Berlin Memorial, and I attended with the Board of Health and the Fire EMS Chief and a regional CERT, I'm sorry, not CERT, MRC. That is the, what is it, Medical Reserve Corps, right? Medical Reserve Corps Coordinator and a consultant from the City of Worcester. So what we did was we went over the protocol that we would follow in case of a pandemic and there was a, you know, an emergency vaccination clinic. So of course we were using the newest coronavirus as an example. But what we did was we kind of just simulated what the flow of traffic would be, where the stations would be located and things. But the reason I bring this up is because there are opportunities. We talked about volunteerism at the Coffee Talk last week. And there are opportunities for folks locally to get involved in the MRC at a regional level. They provide training in CPR, emergency first aid, and all kinds of other things. And you simply volunteer to be deployed to where they need you in the region. And you could choose to be deployed to your own community in the case of something like this. So I just wanted to get the word out there, we're going to help advertise those positions on our website. It's a really important, you know, it's a really important responsibility or really important volunteer opportunity. So we're going to get going on that. So I got a lot out of today's exercise. The other thing that's not specified on my report is that last Wednesday night, I'm pleased to report that the Finance Committee actually voted to make recommendations on 32 budget lines in the draft FY21 Berlin budget. So the Finance Committee is now starting to make progress on approvals or recommendations on account lines. So I was kind of thrilled when they did that. So this, tomorrow night, they are meeting with, they're meeting with ACAB at first at 7:30, and then they're going to be going right into Berlin-Boyleston Regional School District. So tomorrow night at the schools, it's going to be a big meeting. And hopefully after that, I'll have a chance to talk with them about revenue projections.
No, I have a client meeting.
We do have the 1870 Town Hall Manager Draft Job Description before the Board tonight for your first review. The Council on Aging Director Job Description is in the hands of the Personnel Committee. They're working on doing updates, recommended updates and edits to that job description. So that'll be before the Board, hopefully next meeting, maybe? Next meeting. And then the other, the other item under HR is the Benefits Consulting. So Dennis and I are going through the scope of services for the Benefits Consultant, and we're actually going to issue that and get going on Phase 1. My goal is to get Phase 1 done before the end of this fiscal year. Let's see. Did I mention library septic last week? I think we might have, I might have mentioned, I can't remember what morning that was, that we did the site visit, but.
I think it was Wednesday, so probably not.
Okay, so the latest on the library septic is that we did a site visit last week in the morning. Our working group met at the library. And we have come to a consensus on the system type and location. So now, next steps is that test holes are being dug on the property to see if the septic design will work where the designer has laid it out. I am still in touch with WRTA on the Council on Aging van. I've asked now twice for feedback on whether it is possible for us to provide supplemental appropriation to get the van we want purchased. So I'm awaiting that. And I have, this is kind of a new thing, on recreational marijuana. The Board had an introductory presentation by 64 Banner not too long ago. It appears they are moving forward to prepare for a community outreach meeting, possibly on March 10th, and that would be over at the 1870 Town Hall. So they've prepared notice, and I think they expect to post notice very soon. Let me just relook through these things. We did receive the B2Q Energy Efficiency Report. I don't know if that's gone up online, Mary, is that something we can put up online? Okay, so we'll put that, that Energy Efficiency Report up online so that folks can just read what opportunities might exist in this building and what the feedback is on the highway garage.
Are we, are you going to make recommendations for what might be next with that?
Well, I think I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to kind of defer to the Energy Committee. But I think based on that, along with Guardian's prior recommendations, if we can match some of those up, I think that would kind of give us the, you know, a direction anyway. So I'll check in with the Energy Committee on that.
Okay.
And we, Friday was our deadline for departments, boards, and committees to submit their ADA self-assessment surveys. We received several. And tomorrow I will be scanning and sending all of those to the consultants so they can, they can prepare to come to town and start touring some of our facilities and getting their, their big report done. And I think tomorrow night, tomorrow night, we have Lisa and I, Lisa, I'll have to check in with you on this. Lisa and I are scheduled to have a follow-up meeting with Wes Boyleston on the potential for a shared facilities manager position. And that's about it for now.
You did mention mass development.
Oh, I did, I did, at the Coffee Talk.
Did you want to talk about that a little bit, or just explain?
Sure, mass development is a quasi-state agency. So they are, you know, somewhat independent. But they offer technical assistance in several different areas around real estate and economic development. And I learned at a recent meeting that they have technical assistance available for examining potential reuse for surplus buildings and properties. And I know I've gone over some of this with PEG too. They have other, they have other grant funding opportunities to promote collaborative workspaces, to promote cultural venues, to actually do construction and renovations on surplus buildings so that they can be reused. So there are a lot of opportunities out there. But they're just one of, they're just one of a few state agencies that offer this type of thing. So it's definitely worth us looking into it.
Yeah.
Margaret, I only have one comment on your report.
Yes.
Under regionalized shared services and equipment?
Yes.
You have next in the Shob Valley meeting, 11/26.
Still, I had that on last time.
I know.
Do you know?
It was just a really good meeting, wasn't it?
It's 2/26.
It's the Roman numeral 2, right?
It's the.
Oh, so just do.
It's 2/26. I thought I fixed that this time.
We still got 11.
Okay, it's 2/26.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, Margaret.
You're welcome.
And it's about 7:15, so come on up, Tom.
All right.
You're looking very cash.
Yeah, just trying to.
Ease back in?
Get stuff done. Yeah, no uniform, can sit back and just get stuff done. I spent about five hours in meetings today anyway, so. We had an operations meeting for the center, and we had a meeting with just the police chiefs in the beginning, and then the regular meeting, so it took, that took about three hours.
Wow.
It was good. But it actually was a very good, good meeting. Then some discussion about the, I don't know if Margaret's filled you in about the IMA and some of the language issues in the IMA and the regional agreement. And then also discussion, I don't know if Ross brought this up at Coffee Talk, or Margaret did, about some funding availability now if we were to take on new, you know, towns. Probably not the best time with some of our communication equipment that we have, but may actually be kind of a conduit to improving that. What happens now is our dispatchers monitor like 15, 16, 17 radio frequencies. It's really difficult for what they do. And this may be a conduit if we were to find a similar community that would be worth coming on board, to not only the financial benefits for some of the things that they'll take on cost-wise for the community that comes on board, but also for the center with paying the salaries of the director and assistant director. But also to get available grant funding to actually build out a radio system. So we would operate on a regional system versus, you know, seven communities with seven independent systems.
They're working on that though, aren't they?
We're trying. The problem is, is how are we going to do it? I mean, we're talking, we're not talking about $100,000 or $200,000 project. We're talking about probably a million dollar, a million dollar plus project. So, you know, granted, it's hard because you have to balance it. We would be in this position at some point on our own anyways, with our own system, on a smaller scale, 200,000, 250,000, or more, depending on what direction it went. So you multiply that by seven, you're going to come out to that million dollar plus anyways, or $2 million. You know, but could we do it a different way? If we can do it with state funding, the state wants more regionalization. They want things to happen. So our hope would be if we found someone, you know, found a community that was under 500, 600, 911 calls a year, that didn't impact the center hugely, that we could find a benefit to, to improving our communication systems and our infrastructure.
Right.
We'll see where that goes.
I think you have to keep a lot of things in mind when you're choosing a town or agreeing to take on another town.
It was hard. We've, we've gone through a lot of growing, I mean, you look at the original district before we got there, then Bolton came in, then Berlin came in, and then Townsend came in. And things really ran relatively smoothly as Bolton and Berlin came in. And then Townsend had some issues and needed to kind of come in quickly. So it wasn't the same flow. But also based on the size of the community, it really tipped the scales. When we were at six, we didn't have to increase staffing. Once Townsend came in, now it was a bump up, we had to increase staffing. So we could probably go from seven to eight or nine if they were the right communities, and now again, not have to increase staffing. But then maybe when you got to 10, we'd hit that tipping point again. And then now you're looking at, you know, more cost increases.
Space increase.
Absolutely.
We've, we've talked about that, yeah.
So there's a lot of things to kind of consider as that comes along. But January, I will tell you, January was an interesting month for us. Usually I come before you and I have, you know, a call to tell you about and something that was pretty interesting. This month, it just kept kind of hitting us. You know, we were just over 750 calls for the month. You know, 27 motor vehicle crashes, which is a lot. I expect the numbers to be higher in the winter months anyways. But, you know, 27, because we really haven't had that bad of weather.
It hasn't been a bad winter.
And most of our crash, we've had a lot of single vehicle with telephone poles involved. So hoping next week, the Hands Free Law goes into effect, you know, we can start enforcement on that, and hopefully that may curb some of our crashes. Again, we ran into some tractor trailer issues. The last couple of months, they've been on 495. This actually happened on Pleasant Street. We had a FedEx tractor trailer take out a pole and take off. And it was, what was interesting about this is we, this was a tractor trailer. Everyone can identify a tractor trailer. Well, we had witnesses that identified a tractor trailer, a small FedEx truck, like van size. So it hampered our investigation a little bit, but actually within, before the day was over, we were actually able to find the truck at a facility in Northboro. And you would think with these distribution companies that track all their property and track their vehicles, we could make a phone call and, yeah, oh, it was this truck and that was here. It was nearly impossible. Well, if you had a truck number or license plate, like if you had a truck number or license plate, I wouldn't need to know, it wouldn't be a problem. So just very interesting how the whole process went. But, you know, it was, it was, you know, the driver brought it back to the facility in Northboro, left. The trailer was completely ruined. I mean, the top was peeled off and he just took off. So it was an interesting, interesting little case.
So I know on the Berlin website, I think it was yours too, someone had posted yet another picture of a truck getting stuck, coming down Pleasant, swinging onto Crosby and trying to swing onto Pleasant, swing onto South.
Yes.
How do we stop? Is it ways that's turning? I know that you have a sign.
Yeah, so what's happening is is people are coming off of the road or at the wrong exit.
Yep.
And then they're coming to turn around.
Oh, and I think that they can just swing.
Yeah, so hopefully, my hope is that what's going to fix this in the future is that we're starting to have these conversations with River Bridge. The intersection at the post office is, is a major portion of that. So that as we look at a redesign for there and how things may change, it could further change how trucks turn around. The other discussion we've had is you kind of come further down Pleasant Street is where, you know, you can merge onto Sawyer Hill, and then it's a no left turn, which, from what I've been told, prior to that being posted, trucks used to turn around there all the time. So that may be another thought, that we kind of look at that and say, maybe we don't block people from turning around in that area. It's just tough. It would probably be as simple if we could just move a pole. That wouldn't be a problem. We could, they'd make the swing and it would be, it would be fine. You know, we went through a real spat of that a couple of years ago. It seemed like every week it was happening. It's been relatively quiet, but one thing unfortunate is a lot of these long haul truckers, now there needs to be a lot of really experienced truck drivers. They could take these trucks and do amazing things. But what we find is a lot that are coming from out of state. They don't even park their own trucks when they get to facilities. They, they drive them in, and there's actually people that back them up for them. That they, the training they get is, you know, is not really set up for rural-type atmosphere. And that's what runs into a lot of our problems.
We watched an interesting one when we were at the library site visit. A truck came upwardward and turned around.
Yeah.
Turned around, and I thought he was going to jab knife, went right back down Carter.
Thought it was going to go right into 19 Carter.
Huge tractor trailer.
Yeah.
It was crazy.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, so our gas stations are continuing to keep us busy. We kind of alluded to it last time I was here with you, that we had a break-in at the Verk. We had an alarm call, seemed normal, we get alarm calls there at all the businesses all the time. And officers responded and everything was fine. Short time later, an employee responded with a key, which is kind of a normal course of action. Officer came back and met the employee, and they found that someone had actually cut a hole in the roof. Based on the cameras and video we saw, they never actually made physical entry into the building and stolen, but it's not, it's not a common means of breaking into, especially a convenience-type store. So, you know, normally if these things do start to happen, we'll see them in other areas. We haven't really seen that, so we're, we're kind of following up to see what happens. Detective Trungon actually, by canvassing some of the area businesses, to get what he believes is a suspect vehicle. So he's working to try and identify the vehicle, but we'll see where that, where that case leads to. So also for the second, second month in a row, we had a robbery. This time it was at the River Bridge Shell. This seemed to be a crime of opportunity, didn't seem well-planned. You know, officers responded immediately. Based on the video information at the scene, within three hours, we had the person in custody. So it worked out very, very well. It was good to see that the evening shift, it happened during the evening shift, the midnight shift came in, they all worked really well together and were able to, to track these people down. And we have a great cooperating witness now that's, that's really going to seal the deal on our case. So it was, it was nice to see how it happened and to see, see something successful like that. You know, a lot of these times, it's, it happens when we're not there. By the time we get there, they're gone. We don't often get a lot of leads. And this time it really worked out well. We were back at River Bridge again. And this was, this incident was a disaster absolutely waiting to happen. Late night gasoline delivery happens on a regular basis there, they sell a lot of gasoline. The driver finished his work and went in to use the bathroom. Short time later, the fire alarm starts going off. It turns out that he carried actually what looked like a pistol. It's like a Marine boat flare gun. And was playing it while he was in the bathroom, fired it off. There's burns all over the walls, so you could see the flare was shooting around while he was in there. And then it shot, but then it shot up through the ceiling, it was a drywall ceiling, through the ceiling and lodged in the attic space. Fortunately, the building didn't, didn't catch on fire. And then the driver left before we got there. But again, we tracked him down very quickly, not, not hard to figure this one out.
It was the actual gasoline delivery driver.
It was actually the gasoline delivery driver for the station. And what's interesting is that there's not much we could charge him with. We really, you would think, you know, all right.
It's not a firearm.
It's not a firearm. You know, it's specifically exempt as a dangerous weapon.
Destruction of property.
So it's destruction of property.
Yeah.
You know, and it's, it's just, that's, that's really, it's not an arson because he wasn't trying to shoot it off and burn the place down. I mean, he didn't run right out too. He didn't just like leave right away, he was there for a minute. He interacted with the clerk, told the clerk what he did. And it just, you know, you would think under like, that gasoline delivery driver wouldn't be able to carry something like this. It'd be something under, that we could enforce, and we couldn't. We racked our brains and the law books and couldn't, couldn't find anything.
No law for stupidity.
If there was.
I know, if there was, we'd be very.
Yeah, you'd have, you'd have a couple of them.
We'd be filling up all the vacant buildings in Berlin in no time.
So again, we stayed steady with medical calls. I'm sure you've seen it in your interactions with Chief Clark. We're constantly at medical calls right now. And then it was a very slow month for Helen with animal calls. There were four dog calls. I think a few, most of them were even covered on that report that I sent out already.
Well, that's what I wondered if maybe I already had.
Most of it you already had, and then I think like three of them with the same dog. And one was a neighbor issue with, with the dogs. So it was a very, very mild, mild month for animal calls, which was good because everything else there wasn't. It just seemed like everything crazy was kind of happening at once. And one good thing I have to report, it's not a January thing, but the new hybrid cruiser is here, it is up, it is running. So it's, it's good to see.
Yes, I think it was on display at Coffee Talk, because at one point.
Yeah, yeah. Talked to Eric.
Eric had left, and then you could see the blue lights outside, so I think there were people in.
It was, I said a little bit of an interesting story, so I brought Sergeant Gilchrist with me to pick it up. And I left him and I walked to go back to my car to drive back here, and the phone rings. And at first, it was a problem with the keys because they switch out the, the fleet keys. So then all of a sudden, he pulls up next to me, he goes, I almost called you again. I'm like, why? He goes, well, I turned the key and nothing happened. But that's what happens. But it was good. It's good to see, it's good to see we finally have, I mean, for something that was ordered, you know, at town, right after town meeting, to have it taken this long. You know, unfortunately, it wasn't our fault, it wasn't MHQ, our supplier's fault, it was Ford and production through Ford. So it's one of the few hybrids on the road in the area. I've got inquiries from several chiefs that want to see it.
Nice.
And I'm glad, hopefully it's going to show us some savings in our, in our fuel bills.
Good.
How's your OT?
Pretty good right now. We, even with the cases we had this month, things have kind of backed off. And so we seem like we should be in a really good place for the rest of the year, barring any disasters.
And the new officer on board, ready to go? Get up to speed?
So, yeah, so he's, he was already up to speed because he's worked for us for seven years, so there's no field training. There's actually a meeting tomorrow of the Municipal Police Training Committee, so what we've asked for is a waiver. So in order to be designated as a full-time officer, you have to go into a full-time academy. But, so that we don't have to keep him at part-time status and, you know, have to run him through normal part, filling part-time shifts so we can plug him in immediately. We've asked for a waiver through the Training Committee until he goes to the academy this summer. So that should be a formality.
And you got a good plug at Coffee Talk. Evy was quite happy that you guys show up down there all the time. And Eric had mentioned that you're generally down the General Store on Friday morning buying coffee for everyone. I threw that in. It's on tape now.
It's on.
There you go. You're in trouble. So no, it was just a nice plug.
It was good.
To say that you guys are around.
We try to be. I mean, it's, you know, if coffee's involved, it's easy. Some of those are addicts. But yeah, it's good to get in and see Evy and the different groups that are at 19 Carter. That's, that's one of the things I like about 19 Carter is, depending on the day, it's very, very different groups, all new people, have all different experiences. I mean, I really enjoy Wednesdays myself because it's, you know, it's a core group of seniors that have a lot of history from the community, and you really get to learn about the past. You know, actually even Fridays at the General Store, the crew that's down there is a good group of guys. And we have a lot of fun. You know, it was actually, we talked, so we talked about the tractor trailer getting stuck. And so we were having discussions about that intersection two weeks ago. And Walter goes, you know what that intersection's called? And he told me a couple of years before, I'm like, yeah, Union Square. I'm like, I actually listen when you talk to me. So it's, it is good, it's nice. Awesome.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much. Anything else come up at Coffee Talk? Eric went away, so I haven't seen him.
House numbers.
Yes, house numbers.
So I know that's, I know that's been a big thing of the Fire Marshal for a long time in the Fire Department.
Yeah.
But that's definitely, for us, it's a huge issue with responses.
Yeah.
You know, taking extra time to kind of search and figure out where, how the houses are.
Well, that's what Eric was saying, that usually when the call comes in, he asks for the name because he'll know where somebody lives quicker than driving down the road and trying to find a number.
But the problem is, is that changes, it's, you lose that.
Right.
You know, you used to, okay, yep, all right, this person. I know, I know that house. They're all new. But now it's three owners ago.
Yeah.
Now one.
Right, right.
Through the chair, would you like to just touch on parking enforcement and the possibility of?
So, yep. So, that was actually one of the things that was turned in with my warrant articles. So, we've obviously had some discussions about parking in some areas of town lately. One of the issues we have is we've never accepted a couple of provisions of the law. One is to actually, to do parking enforcement, to actually have a method. One of the requirements is that if you're going to write parking tickets, you have to have your own hearings officer, someone that can hear, you know, appeals to, to pick tickets. It was actually a discussion I had back in 2013 when I got here. And part of the problem was is no one wanted to be the hearings officer.
So, you volunteered, Margaret?
No, we've had some other discussions with some other people that are no longer elected.
Oh, geez.
No, but just some, there, there are plenty of options out there. Now, we've added some employees throughout the town over the last few years. So, to, to, the number of tickets that we write and have appeals shouldn't be a huge number and shouldn't burden anybody. But to have an ability to enforce that. The, the other provision would be, involves towing of vehicles. We've had some discussion now about what's in our bylaws on snow removal and cars that impede snow removal. Well, we've never accepted the provision of the law to actually be able to tow those cars. So, we, there's a couple of provisions that we need to accept in order to, you know, handle parking enforcement. And then what we'd have to do is have a, and we'll have to have a little more discussion about this, whether we actually have to have a parking bylaw that lists, although if it's just a set of rules with the fines.
It says, the, the law says the Board of Selectmen could actually establish the regulations.
Right.
So, I'm sure the board could work with you and just adopt regulations.
Versus a separate bylaw.
And with schedule of fines. Yep.
Excellent.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief.
I'm not going anywhere.
Alright. Okay, old business. Review the draft in the town meeting warrant. So, I don't, Mary and I sat probably for an hour and a half today just going through. Is that me?
Yeah. I'm trying to move it like farther down the table so it won't.
Yeah.
Okay, try now.
Okay.
Lisa, can you still hear Margaret?
I can now. It was garbled for a minute, but I can hear you now.
Maybe it just needs to be that far away. So, yeah, we sat for quite some time today going over the draft, the placeholders that have been submitted, the warrant article language that's been submitted. Mary is continuing to build the warrant. So, I don't have articles for the board's approval tonight. What I intend to do is take some of the more routine articles and have them on a schedule for the board's approval to include at the, at the next meeting. But we are looking at, the deadline for warrant article submissions was today at five o'clock. No citizen petitions were received. We're looking at having probably 30 to 35 articles in total versus the 60 to 70.
Multi-night.
From last, yeah, from last year. So, the number is, it's a controlled number. So, we're working on that. And at your next meeting, expect to have at least a small slate of, of some of the, the more basic articles for votes to include.
And the ones that have placeholders, the deadline is the 24th?
24th. Yeah, the 24th is the deadline to have language in.
Which is?
Monday.
Alright.
And how many have placeholders that need to do language?
One, one place.
Well, I, I have, yeah, I have, I have several, but I can, I can whip up language. Those were the ones that I've been sharing with the board on the possible town meeting articles. There is at least one bylaw, one bylaw that has a placeholder, just a simple placeholder language. So, there's a handful of them. There's a handful of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
And planning has a meeting in between now and then in case they have something because they tend to be one of the last ones in.
So, planning actually, yeah, planning, we, I got a, I got a new list from Tim.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got a new list from him on the 17th. So, they have actually revised their list too. So, and I've got, he provided, Tim provided language and summaries for each of them.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah. So, yeah, so we're, we're doing okay. We're making some progress.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to the Town Administrator Priorities and Objectives list.
That's it?
No, no. That's the thing. It could have gone on. I was looking at that original list again. I thought, wow, it could go on and on and on. At what point do we say, look, these things just are gonna happen? I mean, we could include, we could include all those other things, but.
Did you cut, you must have cut some things from the list then?
No. What I did was I kind of just reformatted it. So, it's all bulleted instead of headings.
Okay.
I condensed it onto two pages. So.
That's good. That's good. Yeah, Lisa, I don't know if you had a chance to watch our meeting last time, but I asked Margaret if she could sort of list them as far as things that you're going to do anyway or that are required. And then things that are additional that she would like to get done. And that's why it's re-prioritized.
Okay. Yeah, I've looked at the, the current one, but I did not watch last week.
Okay. The only ones that I would say, and there are, they are pretty much the top ones you're gonna, are required.
Yeah.
Or whatever you want to call it.
And they're kind of all, they're, a lot of them are in progress.
And, and, yes. And then the others on, on following were like additional.
Mm-hmm.
And I didn't, are you in the process of working on the 2015 payroll service fraud issue or?
That is a matter I'm discussing tomorrow morning. Our administrative finance team is meeting. So, I'm gonna be discussing that with our finance officials that were involved in that to see if they can kind of backtrack, find out where they left off and see how we could actually clean, clean the matter out and get it, get it done.
Okay. So, I mean, I didn't know how time consuming that would be. On my part, probably not very much. On the treasurer, on the treasurer's part and, and.
Trying to find a spot where you're not.
Giving feedback.
Maybe out there.
Or.
Alright, try now. Nope, that's me.
Okay. Ma'am, how about, if you turn the volume down maybe?
Yeah. It's coming out the speaker and going back in. Not too far.
Okay.
If Lisa talks.
Yeah? No, I'm still hearing me.
Okay. Lisa, can you hear?
I, I'm not sure what you were doing just there, but I mean, I just heard you. I'm trying to keep track, but.
Okay.
Yeah, we're doing our best.
We're getting feedback from the phone. And it's probably interfering with how, how you're hearing too.
Okay.
Talking about the 2015.
Oh, yes. Okay. So, there's, there'd probably be, there'd probably be work for the treasurer. And I, I know June has, you know, has mentioned the, the status of the, the thing in the past. So, I just need to get a better handle on, on where, you know, where the treasurer left off with the whole payroll thing.
Okay. Because there were a couple that I thought in the top section that maybe should just go in the bottom. But it really, it really doesn't matter that much.
Okay.
And I have, I have no problem with any, with any of these. It's just, it's quite a list.
It's a real big list. So, we just have to keep that in mind.
Yes.
And you know that whatever you can offload, just.
Yes.
So.
Yes. I mean, my, you know, my primary goal obviously is gonna be to try to take all the top, all these top ones off. And then I'll, I'll start working on the other ones as, you know, as we move forward.
Right.
To see how far we get.
And I, I would assume on the back page, the one that says the Housing Choice Grant, the parking lot reconstruction, won't that be sort of part of town meeting? Are we doing an article?
So, town meeting, yep. That's gonna be a town meeting article, contracting or doing the actual, I'll be assisting with the procurement. But then the highway superintendent is gonna be overseeing the work. And then I would just be finishing up administering the grant and closing out the grant. So, I have parts, but not the entire project.
And it's sort of on the back because of.
It's a short-term project.
Yes.
Yeah. And it's, it's sort of on the back because the project probably wouldn't be done until FY '20 or '21.
Correct. FY '21. Yeah.
Because I, you know, I was thinking annual town meeting, which is in May.
Right, yes.
And then the MIA risk management, that's something that's absolutely probably required.
Well, that's a risk management grant. So, that's kind of bundled with the grant. So, I mean, I would like to, we, we missed out on this year's grant application for MIA. But for next fall, I, I'd really like to see if we can get an application in and get some, you know, equipment related to OSHA compliance or have somebody, have a consultant come in and really get started on OSHA.
Right.
Training compliance and, and staffing compliance and stuff. So, that's what I'd like to focus on.
Okay. So, that would also be something that would be 2021?
Yes.
Alright, I got it. Alright. Okay. Does either one of you have any questions?
I'm good.
Lisa, you're good?
I'm good.
Okay. Then I would ask for a motion to approve.
And so seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Good luck, Margaret.
I knew someone was gonna say that.
Yep.
Well, just keep lugging away.
That's right.
Well, see, that's the goal. The more we dump on you, the longer you stay.
There you go.
Oh, geez.
Oh, it's job security.
It is. Yes, job security. We got you.
Alright. Moving on to new business. Review of the draft job description amendments to the 1870 Town Hall Manager first.
Okay. So, this was lightly modified. We didn't really know what to expect on this job description until we had the Coffee Talk. But based on the Coffee Talk discussion, there really aren't, there really aren't substantial changes to make to this job description. A lot of this is just capturing the Town Administrator in the, in the chain of command. And adding a few other, adding a few other items. You know, we'd like, you know, ideally someone would have some sort of marketing background or marketing experience with social media and, and doing marketing. Is that mentioned in here? It is on the back that we added that as, as a revision under knowledge, ability and skill.
Okay, gotcha.
And then marketing is addressed in the essential duties. Yeah. So, these are minor modifications, but these are just being introduced to the board today. We're gonna pass this over to the, to the Personnel Committee for Wednesday to take a look at the edits. And then we could bring it back to the board at, at your meeting on Monday for approval.
Okay.
So, I would ask for any comments by, ooh, geez, tomorrow. I'll give you till Thursday. Thursday. Comments by Thursday.
Did you, did you have any comments or questions right now, either one of you?
Ouch.
Okay. Alright. I'm, I'm actually good with this.
Okay.
I drafted the original. So, it was pretty much the changing, you know, who the responsibility falls to and adding the marketing. And that's about it. Okay. How about the Administrative Secretary job description?
Alright. So, these are also draft changes. You have three different copies of the job description. The one on top is the existing approved job description. Then the next is the red line version. And finally is the clean draft version. So, Mary and I went back and forth to plug in some updates to this. Again, to capture the Town Administrator in a reporting structure that would include me or the Town Administrator, some duties related to social media posting. And, sorry. I think what we're gonna expect is with the HR consultant onboard, there may even be more edits later on. So, these are kind of, Mary, tell me if you disagree. But I think these are kind of the basic, include the Town Administrator just as, as, as part of the reporting structure.
Yeah.
And then we can take it from there with any other changes.
I think the only question I had was the, the, the last bullet on page two of the final, I think it's the final document.
Okay.
No, wait a minute. Next to the last, the next to the last bullet.
Next.
On, on, on page two.
Okay.
Maintains and updates select board and Town Administrator webpages at social media sites, which is already mentioned in the definition. Did you want to keep them both?
Oh, it's, so it duplicates the, I thought I saw that too at some point. I didn't see harm in leaving it because.
No, there is no harm in leaving it. I just didn't know if you wanted to leave it. Up to you, really.
Definition. My thought is the definition on most job descriptions would be pared down to, to a paragraph or a sentence or two that would be much smaller than this. So, maybe we could take it out of definition entirely because that gets into tasks. So.
Okay.
Yeah. So, that is something that we could probably pare down out of definition and just keep it in the essential duties.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? This is just the initial preview?
That's right. This is the initial preview. So, any comments, any comments, questions, suggestions, please get them to me by Thursday if possible.
I, I also drafted this one. So, I didn't have any problems. That was the only comment I have.
Okay. We'll be passing this along to the Personnel Committee for their meeting tomorrow as well.
Alright. Then we have the Appointment of Local Licensing Authority Agents.
Okay. So, this is, this is the chief. Back on September 30th, the board appointed a slate of, I think it was full-time police officers to serve as agents for the local, yeah, alcohol license agents for the local licensing authority. At least one name needs to be removed because he has, he's left us. And then we probably want to add.
Yep. So, yeah, we remove Matt McCray and add Thomas Welch.
Okay. And you just wanted the full-time?
Just full-time.
Just full-time?
Just full-time. So, this would be modifying the list. You also have the list, you also have the list in your packets of what was approved on September 30th. So, my suggestion would be a vote on the list as approved, well, on the approved list from September 30th as amended by removing McCray and adding Thomas Welch Jr.
Yep.
Okay.
Motion to approve the updated list.
Seconded.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
So, these officers, Tom, they cover Monday through Sunday, like the whole week? We always have coverage?
This would be for specific enforcement actions of, for alcohol licenses and things like that.
Okay.
Not necessarily responding to a call of an establishment, but actually taking action based upon the alcohol.
Okay.
Okay. If you're good with that.
Yep.
Margaret's good with this. And we've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Alright. And did you want to recommend a?
I have a recommendation on the next item.
Yes, go right ahead.
Yes. So, I'll just read my recommendation to the board. Several requested amendments have been filed with the Board of Selectmen's Office on the New Flat Penny LLC's Section 12 alcohol license. I recommend that the board vote this evening to schedule a hearing on Monday, March 2nd, 2020 at 8:00 PM to consider any issues that have been or could still be violations of the license as well as to hear any applications the New Flat Penny LLC has filed to address the changes requiring approvals from the board and the ABCC. I further recommend that the board require the owners of record of the New Flat Penny LLC and the proposed new manager to attend the hearing.
Alright. Is two weeks too long?
We have to, we are required to give 10 days notice. So.
And we have time to investigate, do a background investigation on the new manager.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright. Next is board questions and comments.
This is where we get comfy.
This is where we get comfy and Peg takes over. Alright. So, Margaret, I had sent this around actually to all of us, the masttowncareers.org.
Yes.
So, I mean, for 1870 Council on Aging, is there an opportunity, like if Tom or if Chief Clark have openings to put that up there as well?
Yes. Now, there is a cost to it. It's, what is it? $150 to put it in the book and the website. It would be 75, $75, I believe, to just put it on the website. So.
Okay.
Yeah. So, there's a fee to it. And depending on the positions that you want to, you know, advertise, if you want to advertise broadly, why not put it on? advertise, if you want to advertise broadly, why not put it on that, so...
Okay. And there was also a letter that I had shared with the Berlin Historical Commission. A couple of weeks ago, I had waved around a newspaper, the community, something where there was a local artisan in, who did framing work, that worked with the, I think it was Westbro, their historical commission, to start putting pictures up and giving them to police, giving them to fire, giving them to school. So, I took the article, stuck it in an envelope, and gave it to the historical commission, and June Miller had written back. So, it kind of goes back to the question, or the comment at Coffee Talk on Thursday, where one of the women stood up and said, "I may not have time to do an entire committee, but I may have time to devote to some projects." So, I'm hoping that I can, I sent a note back to June and to Barry to try and figure out what we could do to start getting those pictures out, and maybe to reach out to the town to see if anybody besides Marty has the ability to select photos and maybe blow them up, you know, frames. I know that there's a cost to frames and mounting, but again, you don't know in town who may do that, you know, you don't know in town who may has that. We could go down the Jones Road Mall and find some really old picture frames to be used. So, I know this is a historical item, it's really not a selectmen item, but something that I, I want to try and run with a little bit to see if there's something that we could do, just because there's so much history in the town of Berlin that I would like to see us do something with than sitting in a box, or boxes in a room that no one will ever, ever see. Yeah, I mean, and how cool would that be? I mean, if it was something that you could rotate, or internship for a school, you know, something like that, just to try and brainstorm and, and come up with things to do. Maybe even get some of the seniors involved, you know, you don't know what they could do either. So, I wanted to share that, so I'm just very happy that June wrote back on that one.
That's good.
And, let's see what else.
My only caveat on that is I would like to see modern stuff too, I would like to see what some of our modern artists are doing and not just have it all be historical.
Okay, no, we can definitely wheel that in.
There are some nice pictures up at the post office.
And they had mentioned that, they had actually mentioned that in the, in the letter, ba, 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 Ed Hoffman, an award-winning newspaper photographer and photojournalist from Berlin, has entrusted a valuable image collection, yeah, he talks about it being up at the post office, that the selections were made with the help of Tim Wheeler, Richard Wheeler, Barry and Marty Miller. So, again, there's small pockets of people who were doing stuff, so it would be nice if we could get larger pockets of people doing stuff.
You know, excuse me, if I, if I could offer my thoughts too, getting back into the whole art thing, you know, looking around the grand hall the other night, I mean, that is just prime for a gallery showing. It's, you know, for a local artist to actually have a showing, you know, or to rotate the artist's showings there, I think it would be just wonderful.
Yeah.
And I'm sure Epi has a list of local artists, because they always rotate in there, and the artwork in 1940 is gorgeous.
Yeah.
Yeah, boy, okay.
Okay, and then last, again, it was either in the Beacon, yeah, it was in the Beacon, where Berlin was mentioned on the Nine Towns Recognized with the MMA Report Awards. I know that Mary had put out on the town page that Berlin had won, but when it, it's things like this, I mean, can we also add that to the website? I mean, it just gives like a little more oomph that, you know, Berlin is getting recognized statewide for the things that we do.
Yeah.
I mean, and I just took a picture off my camera and sent it, I'm sure we could make something much nicer, but again, just to continue to show that, you know, the people in town, the volunteers in town, their work is being recognized, and, you know, to publicly thank them and put them out, and again, as we talked about on Coffee Talk, you know, channeling Lisa, that it's, you know, volunteers make the town work. So, I think when people see something like this, they may be more willing to be like, huh, I don't have time, I don't have 20 hours a week to spare, but I have two, you know, what can I do? All right. And have we ever thought of, again, it was in one of the papers that I read, about to increase our social media presence, to do any type of Facebook Live? I mean, if we're thinking of putting cameras and audio in the rooms to do more meetings, any type of that, so maybe that it does go live and somebody is sitting there monitoring, and people might be sending questions in, so it comes in during a meeting that somebody other than just, you know, the 25 people crammed in a room can get back? I mean, it's just a, it's just a thought, again, more presence to get the word out more in town.
I like the, I mean, I like the idea, and I've been part of meetings of public bodies where, must be the olden days, where they had a phone, you know, you have phones set up, people could call in, you know, they allowed for call-ins, so, so I like the idea. I just, I wanna, I want us to look at the logistics.
Correct.
Of doing it, to be sure that we can accommodate that on at least a somewhat regular basis.
Yeah, so I wasn't sure, but I wanted to bring it up and at least start to throw it out there that, you know, maybe cable, we can start to work with them, get them involved a little bit more, again, more opportunity for people to participate, to man the, you know, Facebook Live. I know at my old company, they did that, you know, so people could just, you know, Twitter in their response, and it would come up, oh, we have a question from so-and-so out in, you know, out online on Linden Road, what's up? And you read the question, so again, the people are feeling more involved if they can't get to town meetings, art meetings, ZBA, planning, insert other meeting here.
It makes me wonder, and I'm just really not a techie, but it makes me wonder whether having the meeting rooms hardwired for audio, video, and will that allow something like that, that we might be able to be able to put up?
First we have to get them to go live.
That's not really what they're doing.
Uh-huh.
Facebook Lives tends to come, I mean, you actually see a phone up doing Facebook Live when that is happening.
Okay.
And you would have to have staff to handle that, and you would have to have staff to handle the incoming things, there, there's a lot of coordination that would have to happen, you can't just jump into this type of technology.
Okay.
I think that there is merit to the idea, but you really need to think about how you implement this type of technology.
No, agreed, it's just an idea to try and get more interaction with people in the town of, obviously, other towns are doing this, so maybe, you know, whether it's feasible, you know, cost-wise, people-wise...
I mean, my guess is you'd have to have a separate phone for the town that you were doing this from, that you'd have to, I mean, yeah, there's just a lot of moving pieces here.
Okay, well, you know what, I'll email Brittany, maybe she'll know, and we can at least start to talk and flush it out. Obviously, not saying, you know, we need it done in the next month or the next six months, it's gonna take time, but again, you know, box, outside box, you know, would like to start doing different things.
Okay.
That's all I had. My list was, well, Margaret was picking them off as she was like going through, I'm like, well, we'll cross that one off, cross that one off, so...
Anything else to add about Coffee Talk?
Yeah, it's sort of, that was my question, really, if there's anything else that we need to follow up on with Coffee Talk.
I don't think so, I mean, I think it was a great opportunity to have speakers that it's now morphed, you know, from Coffee Talk was just folks coming to us asking their questions, now we've turned it to start bringing information to the people, you know, which I think is really nice, and it seems that it's more participative than, oh, Tom, I can't get out of my road, where's the cruiser, you know, type of thing? That it's more what's going on with Nishoba, what's going on, you know, that Dave's doing for the town for Highway and Chief Clark. It was really nice to hear a lot of his stories, you know, on the background, especially with the bombing and, you know, for the marathon, and that he was there and he was prepared type of thing, so, I mean, I, I like it, I saw different faces, which was really nice in the crowd, and people seemed to be throwing out more ideas, and I think that's what we have to lean to, is, hey, what keeps you up at night, you know, types of questions, and have them come back, whether it's what we can do with 1870 house, or, you know, traffic, or anything else that is going on in town.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's our part is to bring the communication to them.
Correct.
The information to the public also, that's one way we can do that.
Correct, and so, I mean, obviously, we should have one before summer, and no one's around, and we go on a shorter schedule, so we'll have to schedule it at 1870, and then the same, Margaret, with some of the discussions that you had talked about with finance before.
Absolutely, before town meeting.
Town meeting, that we can settle some dates down and get them out, publicize them even more. I know Louise Janda had come up and said, hey, that's great, you know, you put it on on the website, you put pamphlets around town, you know, the Powderhouse News is one, but, you know, we get a little lag on that one, just to get more information out there. It was nice that the item was there, that Jan did show up.
Yeah.
So, you know, nice to see, you know, what she may or may say about it. So, again, you get it out there, people are gonna read the item, people are gonna see it, they may become more involved next time.
Yep.
So...
I put down in my notes that we need to put that on an agenda to pick a date for Coffee Talk.
Yes, yep.
Yeah, we'll have to work on the date for the pre-town meeting meeting too.
Correct.
Especially if you wanted to do it at 1870, 'cause it's so, it's so booked.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, we do have need for an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, to investigate charges of criminal misconduct or to consider the filing of criminal complaints, and also to vote to approve executive session meeting minutes of February 10th. And we will be returning to open session, only to adjourn.
Let's mark the ayes.
Stone aye.
Keefe aye.
All right, thanks.